Today is Monday, December 4th, 2017. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council at 7:35. I want to ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I can do it. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to please call the roll.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Walensky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Absent.
Park.
Here.
Conquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
And Brennan.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have forum. On to Agenda Item 3. In addition to our normal agenda, we have a public hearing for our budget. The state of Illinois requires us not only to have this public hearing, but also to pass a budget every year. Kind of a physician heal thyself situation, huh? Anyway, so for this, for the public hearing within our meeting, it is concerning the city's proposed 2018 budget. I call the public hearing regarding the 2018 budget to order. Clerk Spencer, I'm going to ask you again for a roll call.
Okay. Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Walensky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Absent.
Park.
Here.
Conquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, okay. Purpose of this public hearing is to take public comment concerning the city's proposed 2018 budget. At this time, is there anybody who has any written comments they wish to submit to Clerk Spencer to be read into the record? Any written comments, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'll move on. Clerk Spencer, did we, did we have a sign up sheet just for the hearing?
Yes, we did, Mayor.
Did we have anybody sign up for it?
No one signed up.
Okay, nobody signed up for the public hearing sign up sheet that we had at the back of our chambers at this time? Is there anybody in the public, and I'll clarify this by saying, we're still going to have public forum for our meeting after this, but as it relates to this public hearing for the budget, is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in on our budget sign up sheet but wishes to comment during this time? Please raise your hand so I can get a count. Okay, seeing none? That's it, I just asked for a motion to adjourn. Okay, that concludes our public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Toledo. I can do this by voice vote? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing is adjourned. On to receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communications that they wish to submit to the clerk? Please raise your hand if you have any written communications. Come on up, sir. Please hand whatever you have to Clerk Spencer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else with any written communications? Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum portion of our meeting. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. Once you're recognized, we ask that you make your way to the microphone over to my right, your left. When you're at the microphone, we ask that you identify yourself as we are recording this. Addresses are optional. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes out of respect for other people that may want to speak tonight and also out of respect for the work that we want to get done this evening. I will be keeping time if you run over three minutes. I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody who has signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor, I'll start with Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. I'd like to read something, if I may. The deal does not include, the deal does include clawback provision. If the group fails to complete the project or voluntarily relocates either to BMW or to Toyota dealership before the sixth year of the agreement, 100 percent of the incentive must be repaid. This amount to be repaid goes down by 20 percent each of the following years until the end of the ninth year. Just in regards to BMW dealer in this discussion when this was voted in by the council, this portion never came up for discussion. You're going to reduce what you gave them by 20 percent. And the city negotiated that for us. I want to take you guys when I go get a mortgage. We also have an interest of mine. There was an article in one of the major newspapers about water meters. Town in the area was replacing them with electronic. Unfortunately, they randomly selected some of the meters and had them tested by an independent lab. They found the meters weren't reading correctly. Is this city considering testing some of these meters to make sure they do actually read what you're selling to residents? I guess not. Also, I watched the channel Thursday, tried to see what was happening in this council. It wasn't totally telecast. So I'm a little at a loss of just what you guys have debated. It's a large amount of money, gentlemen. Deals cut for this dealership don't make me feel any happier.
Mr. Pagash, I share you three minutes. I'd ask you to wrap up, please.
I wish in the future, when you do something like this, you do inform the people you represent. Because over time, we'll forget you. You gave away $6 million.
Gary Conroy, something like that, 284 West Fremont. Conroy.
I think he's going to let us help us out here.
I'm used to having my name mispronounced. Kerry Caveney, 284 West Fremont. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you for a few minutes. I'm here to speak about the O'Hare noise issue a little bit. For some of us in Elmhurst, we do have a noise issue. And if you only take one thing away from what I'm asking for here, I would hope it would be this. I did present a document to the clerk, and on page one of that document, I show that if you look at the surrounding communities around O'Hare, all of them have permanent noise detection stations set up. I'm not sure if it's set up by the FAA, but they are set up. Elmhurst does not have one, and I would just like to suggest that maybe we look into asking the FAA or O'Hare to give us a permanent noise detection. I realize that this is an issue that doesn't affect a lot of, it doesn't affect everyone in Elmhurst, but it certainly affects a lot of us to the point where, you know, every other week, we can't sleep at night because we have planes going overhead. I didn't, I didn't move into a house next to train tracks. If I had, I would be like, I would not be complaining about train noise to you. But the home that I did move into, didn't, I went to visit the property three or four times before we bought it. There were no airplanes, and now I've got a lot of planes going overhead. The only other, let's see, I did try to include in the document, I took a screenshot of Google Maps to kind of help you visualize where the plane noise is affecting Elmhurst and the northeast suburbs, the suburbs that are northeast of O'Hare. And you can see that Park Ridge isn't, is really getting the easy, the easy out on this. They're not suffering nearly as much as we are, even though they seem to be mobilized a lot better, I think, than Elmhurst. I'm not sure exactly why that is. But about 25 percent of the nighttime traffic in and out of O'Hare, departures and arrivals, does affect Elmhurst directly with direct over flights. And then the last page of the document I provided just kind of highlights the new proposed takeoff and landing schedule for the runways. And you can see that there's really nothing that's going over Park Ridge. I feel bad picking out Park Ridge, but they're really getting, getting off easy on this. That's it, thank you.
Barbara Lonergan, 261 West Fremont.
Barbara Lonergan, 261 West Fremont Avenue. Today's news was, both broadcast and print, was filled with news about Friday's ONCC Fly Quiet vote. In a majority of those news articles and segments on TV, Bensonville's city manager name appeared in most of them, including an article in the Chicago Tribune. Mr. Summers says that the Fly Quiet interim plan probably has the votes to pass, but that depends on who shows up to the meeting. He states, and I quote, "It's going to be close. The challenge for me is getting the votes there." So it sounds like Mr. Summers is actively campaigning on behalf of his residents to get the votes to pass Fly Quiet. I hope that Elmhurst is doing the same in opposition of Fly Quiet, and if not, I hope that you spend the next three days doing so for your residents.
And Anne Marie Gustafson.
Thank you, Anne Marie Gustafson. I'm at 321 North Highland Avenue. Like my fellow community members, I would just like to be reassured tonight that the city of Elmhurst and District 205 will be well represented and a vocal opponent of the IFQ plan at the ONCC meeting and vote on Friday morning. I never imagined I would be here speaking at a city council meeting again. This is not my wheelhouse. I didn't go to college for political science or business. I have a degree in fine arts in musical theater. So what I do know is, I know a good show when I see one. And what I have witnessed in the meetings I've attended and the minutes I have read seems to me to be an obvious display of shady politics surrounding the ONCC and the CDA. I would like the city council members to know that the IFQ does not just affect one or two families, but hundreds of families and children. We heard rumors about a political game being played. We heard it's a done deal and that the nighttime airplane noise is not that bad. We were told the city is working hard for the residents of our community. We expressed our concerns, and then all of our suspicions were confirmed with the IFQ proposal. I frankly can't believe that a political agenda is playing a role in the health and well-being of my family in our home. Can you imagine spending two years, every night, every other week, tending to your children when descending planes are waking them up all night? It's like two years of sleep deprivation with a newborn. So I would like to know what the city of Elmhurst is going to do to fight this and to make sure that this does not become permanent. Thank you.
That's all who signed up for public forum.
Okay, that's it for public forum for those who signed up. Is there anybody at this time who did not have an opportunity to sign up on our sign in sheet but wishes to address the council at this time? Please raise your hand if you do not have an opportunity to sign in but wish to address the council. Seeing none, we'll conclude public forum. On to announcements. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Dunn.
I just want to follow up to some of the comments in public comment today. There is a meeting Friday of the ONCC. It's an impromptu meeting that was unscheduled, and the sole purpose of that is to vote on the proposed interim Fly Quiet rotation plan. And want to make that announcement and encourage all Elmhurst residents and interested parties to attend that and voice their concerns regarding that proposed plan. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that Alderman Dunn, thank you for announcing that. I think the location is also important and the time, so that is Friday, December 8th, 8:00 AM, Cafe La Cava, if I'm saying that right, which is 2777 South Mannheim Road in Displanes. Once again, it's this Friday at 8:00 AM, Cafe La Cava, 2777 South Mannheim Road, Displanes. Thank you.
We'll make sure we post those details on the city website. Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to the consent agenda at this time. Is there any item on the consent agenda, any Alderman wishes to have removed to provide further comment or vote no? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety. Motion by Alderman Bram, second by Alderman Deuter. Clerk Spencer.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Absent.
Park.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda in its entirety is approved. On to Agenda Item 8, Committee Reports. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the city council approve the city of Elmhurst 2017 tax levy in the amount of $10,185,146. Furthermore, it is the recommendation of the FCAAS committee that the city council approve the abatement of all current debt service obligations for the city's general obligation bonds in the amount of $7,643,968.76. The FCAAS committee also recommends that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare the 2017 tax levy ordinance and appropriate debt service abatement ordinances, signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman, Mark P. Sabatino, Vice Chairman, Tina Park, and Mike Brennan.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, it is the general case with tax levy. I have a few prepared comments. They won't be probably as voluminous as they have been in the past, but as always, I'd like to begin by thanking city staff for all the thoughtful work in preparing the budget document, which leads to the tax levy discussion and recommendation that we have before us tonight. I'd also like to compliment our committee for the time spent in having some engaging conversations related to this topic, ranging from a higher tax levy to a lower tax levy and pretty much everything in between. I believe that we've come to a good place with the recommendation, but I'd also like to add that none of us would like to see a tax, and none of us likes to raise taxes, period. First and foremost, what I'd like to do is kind of clear the air on what was cited as the primary driver of the recommendation for the tax levy increase. The required pension contributions that the city makes to the pension funds for police and fire are both a result of statutory liabilities created over the years by the state of Illinois legislature. The city of Elmhurst has wisely taken both timely and complete funding of these liabilities very, very seriously. By doing so, we are taking steps to, so as not to burden future generations of taxpayers with payments related to expenses that were attributable benefits that have long come and gone. So, I'd like to be clear that all of us around the dais know that Elmhurst Police and Fire are both exemplary public safety units with the finest public servants and the first responders that truly provide results that are above and beyond. So our hats, or my hats off to them, for sure. However, the police and fire folks who serve the residents of Elmhurst are the players, actually all-star players, in a game that's controlled by the Illinois State Legislature. And it is this game, not the players, that is driving huge cost increases in this, what I consider to be the most important services a municipality provides. The 2017 tax levy recommendation tonight before us is, represents a tax increase of a little over $303,000. Represents a little over a 3 percent increase in the city's portion of the tax levy and ultimately lands at about 2.6 percent when we factor in what the library is levying. As a reminder, there are three line items out of 20 line items on each taxpayer's property bill that relate to the city. They are, number one, the city of Elmhurst, number two, pension fund, and the third line item is city of Elmhurst LIBR. I didn't have room for the rest of that. The city line item will increase $16.77 for the average home. The library line item will increase $8.26. Add them together, the cumulative tax increase will be $25.03 for the average home in Elmhurst. The good news is that the average home in Elmhurst also increased in value by about 6.8 percent for 2017. Also, good news is that the committee is recommending continued abatement of the debt service for general obligation bonds totaling, as the clerk mentioned, about $7.64 million for the 2017 levy. So there's a lot of information, numbers, stats, in the committee report and the related schedules, and I can tell by some conversations that I've had with a few of you on the dais that you've read, you've thought about it, you've digested all this information. Bottom line, as the mayor alluded to at the very first committee, the whole meeting we had several weeks ago, it's our job to provide the path for city staff to land this plane on the runway, with the plane being the general fund balance and the runway being the general fund balance policy established by this body. The path is clearly and concisely put into words in the second bullet point of the three deliberation factors on page one of the committee report and guided us in our recommendation to not absorb the pension cost increases in the general fund portion of the tax levy as we have been doing since 2013 tax levy. So for the third year in a row, I think it's the third year in a row, I'll once again reiterate that we will all need to continue to work together to pay close attention to the general fund balance and the underlying economic conditions to make sure that we maintain the general fund balance in a responsible manner so as not to cause undue stress on those resources. Finally, because of this budget and tax levy recommendation, we have a general fund balance that would be squarely within the prescribed general fund balance range, but collectively, we've got significant work ahead in the future periods to keep it there. So with that, I will thank you for your time, ask for your support of this report, and let you know that I will do my darndest to answer any questions anyone may have. Thank you.
Okay, very well done, Alderman York. Any questions? Questions? I guess I'm good. It's like you explained it all, Alderman York.
I guess.
Seeing none, I'm going to ask Clerk Spencer to call a roll.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Walensky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Absent.
Park.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 8.1 is approved. On to Agenda Item 9, Reports and Recommendations of Appointed Elected Officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. A couple of things to cover this evening. First of all, the new front porch is out. If it hasn't hit your mailbox yet, it will soon. One thing I do want to point out is that our crack staff has added an internal insert of every single restaurant in Elmhurst. I'm saying that with confidence because that's what's written here, but if somebody opens up a restaurant in December, I can't say they're in here. Anyway, I would encourage you to look at all the restaurants we have here. Go through the list, and there's some stuff here that you've never seen before. Couple other things. We are running our Holly Trolley this year, which is a winter version of our summer trolley. It runs on December 9th, February, I'm February, December 9th on Saturday and the following Saturday on December 16th. You can look at, look up Explore Elmhurst for details on this. The other thing people have been asking me is Santa will be arriving. He's coming early to Elmhurst to say hello on, and he's actually going to arrive on a trolley of all things. Santa will be here on December 19th, arriving on a trolley at the City Center Plaza. I will be there to welcome him, and similar to tree lightings in the past, this isn't a tree lighting, but it's actually kind of a holiday block party where Santa is the key attraction. Again, please visit exploreelmhurst.com for details. As I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the IC Knights were playing for the state championship. I am pleased to say that the IC Knights stomped the Pleasant Plain Cardinals, not the pushovers, the Cardinals, 35 to nothing. We certainly congratulate the Knights on their second consecutive state championship. I know we've been in contact with them, and when we can arrange schedules, we will have them here for a formal congratulations. And finally, you may or may not have noticed, if you came into City Hall through the back entrance today, there's a new flag flying out there. Governor Rauner sent me a 200-year bicentennial flag. You may not know, but the city, sorry, the state of Illinois had a birthday yesterday, December 3rd. It's 199th year birthday, so we are currently within the 200th year anniversary of the state of Illinois. We had some pictures taken and did a flag raising and submitted it at the governor's request. There's a couple of things that the state of Illinois is doing to celebrate the entire year, all 365 days, of this being our 200th anniversary, and I will be posting that information on our website as well. City Manager, that's it for me.
Thank you. I have three items tonight. One is a reminder that leaf collection, the last leaf collection of the year will be this week with regular garbage pickup. Any questions, please let us know. That is posted on the website as well. We continue to collect Christmas lights for recycling here at City Hall, and there's a number of locations throughout town that are doing that, so as people are decorating and they inevitably find out that some of the strings don't work, usually after you put them up, we will take those. And then the last item, something that we were just recently notified about, the Chicago Area Clean Cities Executive Board has awarded the city of Elmhurst the Green Fleet Leadership Award. This award recognizes the city's excellence in implementing green fleet technologies. They specifically recognize that Elmhurst fleets have had the greatest increase in petroleum reduction through the use of biodiesel over a 12-month period, so that's something for us to be proud of. We are sending some staff to the awards this week, on the 7th, where we will formally receive the award and certainly will bring it to the city council after that.
Okay. Any other reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item 10. This is in an ordinance approving our budget. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
A Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for the city of Elmhurst for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending on December 31, 2018.
Okay, to put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Toledo. Alderman York, anything you want to add?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alderman Bram.
Yes, I just wanted to touch on what I spoke about at our, I believe, our last meeting last week in regards to the budget. I want to revisit the two main points, two main concerns that I have in regards to the stormwater fund and as Director Trozine attached to this week's agenda, a list of all our carryovers, and that included a carryover of $1.3 million from this current fiscal year. stormwater fund, and as Director Trozine attached to this week's agenda, a list of all our carryovers, and that included a carryover of $1.3 million from this current fiscal year to the stormwater fund, added to what has been a placeholder or proposed at this point, $500,000, would be a $1.8 million budget line item for stormwater, for the stormwater fund. Our policy has, we have discussed this when we created this fund, was $1 million, currently is $1 million, which would, if this budget moves forward as proposed, would mean that we're $800,000 over our current policy for this fund. I say this with great sincerity, but I also want to touch on, I am very sincere in regards to the problems we have in regards to flooding and stormwater. I'm not trivializing that at all, but I also believe that when we pass the policy, when we discuss that policy, the policy of $1 million was set for good reason. To add an additional $500,000 on top of the $1.3 million for this fund, I think is unnecessary and is adding to our bottom line, our budget unnecessarily. As I have documented, or as stated in the last meeting, in two years in regards to the stormwater fund, we spent, I think it was 1.1 million, two years in total. Now we're proposing to have a budget line item of 1.8 million when we didn't even spend that much in two years. And Mr. Mayor, I hope you'll assist in this manner, because at this point, I don't think I've ever made a motion to amend an ordinance. I'm hoping, over this past week, it's been reconsidered by my colleagues of the necessity of adding an additional $500,000 when just the carryover would be $300,000 over our own policy. So I would like to make a motion to remove the $500,000 line item for the 2018 budget for the stormwater fund.
Okay. That's appropriate. I was checking with, appropriate motion at this time, I was checking with the city attorney. I think council will recall the line item, we don't have to call it a specific line item. I think council will recall the conversation we had. There is $500,000 in the budget to add to our stormwater property buyouts, and Alderman Bram's motion, I think, is fine as stated, a motion to reduce the $500,000 in the budget down to zero for this year with consideration of the carryover that already exists. Close enough, Alderman Bram?
Perfect, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a second, Alderman Bram's motion? Alderman Bram, there's not a second. Motion fails without a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make attempt number two. Again, we just, I just want to highlight that we just approved a tax levy, which that tax levy, albeit slight, is going up. We abate all our GO bonds, and that's what is leading into my next point here, and we do that for good reason. The next item, as I spoke about last week, was about York and Prairie Path underpass that has been in our budget for, I'm guesstimating here, four or five years, with absolutely no action taken in four to five years. It's currently on the PA and S agenda to look at this intersection, to see what cheaper alternatives could be done, and each one of those, I don't remember, four or five alternatives, is significantly cheaper than the million or millions of dollars that would be needed for the underpass, not including the cooperation we would need from DuPage County and the Park District and everything else to get something like this done. A little history on this was that this wasn't even discussed in the committee when it was added to the budget years ago. It appeared on the budget, we had quite the discussion on this item, and rightfully so. I think with all the bonding that we have been doing, and I'm not saying it's not needed because obviously majority of it is stormwater-related and it is needed, I wholeheartedly believe in helping out the whole community. But this is an item that we currently have budgeted for fiscal year 2018, a GO bond of $150,000 for engineering of a York and Prairie Path underpass that hasn't been acted upon for years, which in my estimation, isn't needed. And it seems, and this is my speculation, and my speculation only, that the committee believes it's not needed because currently they're reviewing four or five items and hopefully coming back with a recommendation to the full city council that does not include the underpass. At least that's what the documents have stated for the past committee meeting, which they did not have the opportunity to discuss because it was a shortened committee meeting. But yes, ideally, would we love grade separation? Of course we would. I would love grade separation, not having to walk across traffic at every single intersection. This is about vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Quite frankly, it's about looking both ways, being aware of what you're doing. We have made modifications this past year that, in my estimation, has significantly improved this intersection, and even from the aldermen from this area, at least I have not personally heard, any complaints or any further issues of this area since those modifications have been done. I believe, if my memory serves me correctly, that it has great improvement to the intersection from a safety standpoint, from line-of-sight perspective. So I'm not even proposing to remove the whole underpass from the budget of 2018 moving forward. I am making the recommendation, and I will be making a motion, to remove it from 2018. And the reason being is because we should wait to see what the committee comes out with, with their recommendation before budgeting this. Because even if the committee says, well, none of these alternatives work, we have to do this underpass, we're probably not gonna get it going this year anyway. So at this time, I'd like to, and this one, I do have the page numbers, Mr. Mayor, on page 152 of the budget document, 80-23 of building improvements, and the cab, page 49, to remove the 2018 proposed expenditure of $150,000 for the York and Prairie Pass underpass. York and Prairie Path.
Alderman Bram, I might have the wrong page. Give me the, not the cab page, but the other page again.
I believe I had it on 152.
And what was the number?
80-23. I believe it's building improvements if...
So there's 1.4 million in that, but what does the cab say? What was it, what cab number was it?
It was page 49, I believe.
Okay, so out of the 1.4, we would, you're proposing to forego that funding and reduce that 1.4 by 150,000. Yeah?
I don't know, because I don't have my budget book here. I borrowed Alderman Deuter's when I looked it up earlier. Yes. Oh, no, you don't have to apologize. I forgot my budget book.
Doesn't sound right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, those are not the right numbers.
80-23. What this means?
It's 80-25.
Mr. Trozine, can you shed some light on this? You want to find a microphone, and I hate to put you on the spot, but you did attend the meeting.
It's 80-25. Street improvements, that's what I think it is.
You think it's 80-25?
It's 80-25. Yes, it's 80-25.
Oh, it says so at the top of the cab expenditure budget.
Yeah. There's three. Three. So reduction of, I should have remembered what I said last week, reduction of the 415...
By 150,000.
Yeah, by 150.
Mr. Trozine, I think we got it. Sorry to make you... All right, so Alderman Bram would like to make a motion, which basically removes this expenditure, which is on cab 49, on page 152 of the budget, 80-25, the current number lists at 415. Alderman Bram is making a motion to reduce that number by 150,000. Sound good, Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the assistance. Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, we have a motion to change line item 80-25 on page 152 of the budget, and reducing the 2018 projection, 150,000. Do I have a second? No second, Alderman Bram?
All right. Last item is in regards to my question last week of...
We have an answer for you.
The license plate readers, and to pretty much get all the license plate readers in one year compared to a two-year plan.
We checked with the chief, and the two-year rollout is what they're recommending.
Is there any rationale behind why?
If I may. Based on our experience of putting the others up, it just takes, the time that it takes to get the cameras up, we feel very comfortable that we can get the cameras within the 250 this year up. We're not so sure about the, in fact, we're not confident at all about the second part of that. We prefer to defer that to 2019.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Alderman Bram?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other comments or questions as it relates to the motion before us? Alderman Palmski?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to speak generally about the budget, but then also touch on something brought up, is it's an item at the Public Affairs and Safety Committee. I appreciate the thoughtfulness that was behind moving the budget discussion and setting our budget and adopting or setting the levy, and I think that we are much better able to plan and to get an idea of where our funds need to be. But I do think it's important to say that it's still not 100% perfect, because some of these discussions are on an ongoing basis, and we don't know exactly how much we'll need to spend, and we have to use our budget as our planning guide. A little bit about the underpass project that's at the PA and S committee. It is a, in part, funded with a grant, and that is why it is something that we feel it's important to thoroughly vet. One point that has come up is that there have been more pedestrian accidents recently, so that's something to discuss. And I think there have been many people discussing the budget, and, you know, are these the right numbers or not, and I think that we may find that the council and staff may end up spending less than some of the projections. You know, we don't know, maybe it's stormwater buyouts, maybe it's the underpass sign, maybe something else will be eligible for the motor fuel tax, and I think that we will all work to make sure that we spend less if it's possible. But I think that it's, we're getting closer to being able to plan perfectly with the way that we've lined up our calendars, but we are just doing our best to adopt the budget and set the levy at the same time. I support the budget. Thanks. And the levy.
Any other comments on the motion before us? Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to call the vote.
San Patino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin, absent. Park.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Budget is approved for next year. On to agenda item 11, resolution. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the resolution.
A resolution urging the governor to veto Senate Bill 1451.
Put this before council, ask for a motion to approve the resolution as read. Motion by Alderman Palmski, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman Palmski, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution, the city doesn't often get involved with state government unless it directly affects us, and in this case, it would. This is the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act, or for Senate Bill 1451, which limits municipal authority to regulate small wireless facilities. It would allow providers and their contractors to locate equipment and antennas large as six cubic feet, or other equipment up to 25 cubic feet, to new or existing utility poles. It would not allow us to oversee where any of these facilities go. It wouldn't allow us to oversee the access for emergency vehicles, and it would not allow the municipality, it would not allow us to require a wireless provider to indemnify the city. So for those reasons, we are recommending that the council approve the resolution urging Governor Rauner to veto this bill.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to call the vote.
San Patino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin, absent. Park.
Aye.
Conquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Okay, before we move on, I just want to say something a little bit about this Senate Bill, 1451. I happen to be on the Legislative Committee for DuPage Mayors and Managers, of which the city of Elmhurst is a member, and one of the biggest things that we fight as a committee, and what we talked to Springfield about, is local control, local government control. We obviously are in favor of more control of our own lives, our own city, that we can control, and there seems to be a tug of war. Sometimes, there is a need, in my opinion, for maybe blanket statewide regulation. However, and I understand the intent of this bill, which is to try to at least set up the playing field for these small cell wireless, but this really, this first crack at it really is beyond, goes beyond the pale, in my opinion. Basically, right now, the way it's handled is cellphone provider, cellphone carrier A comes into Elmhurst, and they want to put up their cellphone tower, their receivers, wherever they want. They have to negotiate with us, they have to, we can work with them and figure out where to place it around the city, and we also get to independently negotiate a fee with that cell carrier. We just recently did it last week, maybe, or did we pass it this week? So we, are these the ordinances this week? So last week, we passed the report, this week, we passed the ordinances, I think on two different carriers, where, in good faith, we negotiated with them. These carriers wanted to utilize portions of Elmhurst and put up their little cell towers, or their receivers, whatever you want to call them. But the point is, we had a say in where they put it. Not only that, in this case, we are billing them $250 a month, which, you know, there's certain amount of maintenance, certain amount of attention that these cell towers need, whether or not they come in to service them, that involve interacting with the city. So it's not an insignificant amount. What is an insignificant amount is the amount that's in this bill, which is, we have no say over how much we could charge these providers when they come into town. Not only does it really remove and restrict our say in where they can put these, not to be too hyperbolic, but theoretically, they could determine for the good of the utility that they need to put up a wireless cell tower right next to our fountain in downtown Elmhurst, and we could not restrict it. In addition, I just told you, council's aware, we negotiated $250 a month with a recent carrier. This institutes a flat fee maximum of $250 a year. So this is a great example of overreach into our community. I commend the council on supporting this resolution. However, that's not where it ends. I would ask not only the public, but council members to contact your local elected officials, or your Springfield elected officials, representatives, senators, anybody you know, certainly encourage public to contact them, and certainly the governor's office has a phone number as well, and urge the governor to veto this bill. So just a little context behind this resolution. I appreciate the time. On to other business. On to other business, is there any other business? Alderman Bram?
Yeah, I hope, Mr. Mayor, you indulge me on this. I meant to make a statement, a brief statement under reports. I just want to talk about O'Hare and the upcoming ONCC Fly Quiet meeting. The vote is gonna be happening this Friday at between, well, start time is at 8:00 AM. I do ask all residents who have concerns, and those who want to support their fellow neighbors, to come out to the meeting. The concern I have is according to what the agenda shows as we sit here today, is public form is at the end after the vote is taken. I hope that prior to the meeting, that a request will be made for that agenda to be modified, that public form is moved up on the agenda item, so that before there's votes, at least the ONCC body could listen to the residents that have and continue to have concerns over the issue. If that does not happen, I still think that Elmhurst residents, neighbors should be coming out in numbers, en masse, just to be silent protest, if you would, to make it heard, no pun intended there, that we do care, and this is a big impact. One resident spoke tonight in regards to how this is an impact on a section of town, if you would. I wholeheartedly believe, similar, not saying that they're the same, but similar to flooding that has impacted the south side of town greater than the north side of town, that this also impacts the whole side, all of Elmhurst, just like flooding does. Property values are property values, and if property values go down or are impacted by two-sevenths of the city of Elmhurst, that is a repercussion, as we talk about budget tonight, or have passed the budget tonight, that is a repercussion on what our tax levy is going to be in future years. This is the IFQ, the interim fly quiet, but there is a good possibility that this becomes permanent. I do understand that there's the EIS, the Environmental Impact Study, that's needed before whatever comes out of Friday's meeting to occur, but this is going to possibly severely impact a good number of Elmhurst residents, and I would ask for all my colleagues for their support, continued support, as well as all the residents of Elmhurst. Thank you.
Any other business? We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman York. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hosed. We're adjourned, thank you.